All right, we are going to go ahead and kick off the city council briefing meetings for June 15th. First up, I'd like to welcome Deputy Chief of Staff John Carlson.
Oh, no. It's not a round of applause, but perhaps a semicircle.
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and council members. Thanks for hosting this and thanks for having us here. We've got departments here to talk to you a little bit more about budget. As you pointed out, I'm John Carlson. I work in Mayor Gail Abert's office. I help with the budget team to put together information for the public and for policymakers to be able to answer questions and make good policy decisions. As you know, then the public knows, the mayor was here yesterday and presented her draft budget to the council, talked about vision, talked about high-level investments on how we're rebounding and having a budget of renewal after coming out of our COVID year. And so we're here today for departments to provide more information and more details on that. As in previous presentations, budget staff and finance director are here and myself, we're all here and we'll be taking notes. And so if you have questions or need for additional details that don't fit within the time window, just sing out and we'll make sure we get it all recorded, written down, and get follow-up information to you. We'll meet again tomorrow, Wednesday, and then our final meeting will be next Tuesday. And just for the public, just to remind them, this is just as part of our continuing process that we work together in stages to gather information, put together draft budget, and start to gather community feedback and ask questions about how we're making smart and strategic investments for the community to continue to build a strong Lincoln. So with that, I'm going to kick it off to Chad Blaha from Building and Safety to talk a little bit about what they do there.
Thanks, John, for that introduction. And you said, Richard?
Chad.
Chad Blaha, Director of Building and Safety. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about how Building and Safety is going to propose to support Lincoln through our proposed budget and through these five budget focus areas listed there. First, our mission, Building and Safety. We at Building and Safety committed to ensure that Lincoln's building infrastructure is constructed and maintained appropriately in a condition to provide its residents safe, healthy places to live, work, play, and recuperate. Now, we do that through a number of different services that we provide. One of those is that we help to ensure safe living conditions for Lincoln's residents. We do that by working with landlords, tenants, through annually scheduled inspections through the multifamily apartment rental program, licensing program. And then we also respond to inspection requests from, well, really anybody who, whether they're a renter or whatever, to come and look at their place of their home to ensure that the houses meet the appropriate standards. We protect, we help to protect the quality of Lincoln's neighborhoods. We do that in a number of ways, but mostly through our neglected building registry process and our authority to tag problem properties. We work with owners to resolve the problem, properties. Positive outcomes include working with them to hopefully get them to repair the damage or demolish, if that's appropriate, on their own. If they don't have the means to do that on their own, we work with them to maybe help them choose to sell the properties to somebody who does have the resources and means to either repair or demolish. And if it comes to it, the city does have the ability and authority to cause the particularly damaged properties to be demolitioned and then lean those costs back to the properties. We also help to provide safe conditions for patrons of Lincoln businesses. We do that by working with commercial property owners, business operators, through annually scheduled inspections with our operating permit licenses. We also work with those folks through new business permitting and consultation requests to ensure that all the appropriate life safety equipment, including sprinklers or fire safety equipment, sprinklers, alarms, egress, means of egress, those type, clear paths, those types of things are present and in working order. We also, of course, as you may or may not know, we also do building permitting for the city. And we do that to protect Lincoln's building infrastructure, our most, one of the largest investments in the community. We do that by working with contractors, again, and developers, licensed professionals, architects, engineers, and homeowners to ensure that the new and existing structures meet or exceed the current or modern construction codes within the city and do that through a plan review process and then actual field inspection process. And here's a brief look at the team that Building and Safety dedicates to providing these services. Of course, mayor and then myself, the director. Then we have split into three different primary divisions within the department. Kind of small tech, sorry if you can't see. But we got the development review division, that is mostly the new development areas. So building inspections or building permit approval, development review and approval, that sort of thing. We have an inspections group made up of a chief and five inspectors. Plan review group made up of a chief plans examiner and then a mix of commercial plans examiners and residential and then zoning reviewers as well. We have our business office, do the accounting, pay bills, HR-related stuff. And then their primary focus is customer service, both on the phones and at our public counter. And then our third division is our inspections division. That comprised of three different groups. Again, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, even though they're separate groups, they're kind of usually thought of in the same way. They each have a chief inspector and a group of inspectors dedicated to inspecting those pieces of equipment and installations. We have the housing preservation group. That's the group that responds to concerns about housing conditions. They operate the apartment licensing program, and they will be charged with operating the recently approved short-term rental licensing program, among other things. We also have the Bureau of Fire Prevention, and they wear a lot of hats, as some of you have learned over the years. They responsible for bomb squad response, arson investigation response. They also do the business operating permit program and respond to other complaints within the fire code-related areas. They also do the fire code plan review. So they got a chief inspector, fire code plans examiner, and then seven inspectors. Here is a brief look at the proposed budget that we're intending to dedicate to serving Lincoln. Not a whole lot has changed over last year's in the currently proposed budget. At our expenditures, we actually show are proposing a little bit of a decrease of our expenditures. That's largely due to the completion of a substantial software project update that was approved with last year's budget. And we're about ready to go live within the week for that one. We're really excited. The bottom is our personnel summary. In 1920, we were at 53 FTEs or FTE equivalents. And then last year, we had increased up to 56. And we're not proposing with this budget anyways, an increase in FTEs. However, and I'll show on the next page, due to our funding situation, we have the ability to look at our FTE needs kind of as we go. If you look at the right graph on this slide, that kind of shows the breakdown of our funding sources. We are a very largely fee-funded department. So we rely on very little general fund to provide our services. The 16% of our budget that comes from the general fund is used for our bomb squad and arson investigation activities, as well as a percentage of our housing preservation group. The rest of what we do, all of development services, so building permit, plan review, most of the inspections is all fee-funded and user-funded. So as we show that revenue, we can justify additional FTEs as needed. Here's a quick look at our outcomes and indicators. Again, not much has changed. And we're doing fairly well usually in most of these. The one change I would point out on the bottom is the commercial plan review, first round review indicator. Traditionally, it's been set at trying to meet that goal of a 10-day or less first round review window at 96% of the time. In the seven years that I've been doing this, we've not done that. And talking to staff, it's, we've never really got there. There's a number of reasons for that. Commercial projects are substantially more complex and involve a number of other departments outside of building and safety for the reviews. And so although 90% will be a pretty good goal to try to achieve, we felt that it was still appropriate to put in there. And as a note, even though we are not necessarily hitting that 10-day review mark, our average turnaround time throughout the course of an entire year is in the 12- to 15-day mark. So even though we're not meeting the 10 days, we're not too far. There are certain times of the year where we get a lot longer, certain times of the year in the winter where we're not as busy, but it averages out to be around that 12- to 15 days. Here's a little bit of story about our permitting activity, building permit activity over the last number of years. And as we are transitioning, you can see it's pretty steady with a dip in the 19 and 18 calendar years, saw a pretty big rebound in 2020. We had actually a near historic year for gross number of permits. Last year, everybody was at home bored and wanting to do projects, I guess. So that was a pretty big year for us, trying to accommodate influx of permits under some little bit more difficult conditions with the COVID situation. And on the next page, this is kind of graphically shows those numbers. You can see the little bit of a dip and a rebound in 2020. One thing that we did notice, the commercial plans last year in 2020 took a noticeable dip compared to the previous four or five years. We figured there would be a rebound this year in 2021, and there was. There is so far year-to-date. So this shows the year-to-date permitting activity for the city from January 1st to May 31st for each of the last number of years. And you can see in the residential numbers on the left, we've got a nice little curve there and went down, 18 and 19 started to rebound. And this year, 2021, is starting out to be a huge year for new single-family dwellings, which includes the detached single-family, so regular houses, attached single-family, which are townhomes, and then duplexes as well. So we will be looking closely at that to see if that is sustainable and can be sustained with the increase in construction materials. If it is, we will likely be looking at needing additional staff to be able to continue providing the same customer service next year if that growth continues. And the graph on the right is the commercial buildings. And like I mentioned before, we're seeing a noticeable increase again in 2021 for commercial build-in permit activity. And with that, that's my budget presentation. Certainly answer any questions if you can.
Awesome. I will say that we are at 1:15 for your time. So let's keep questions very, 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 very quick. If anyone has any questions, other department heads are available offline. Councilwoman Washington?
I just wanted to, I do have a question. I wanted to make certain when you said you're getting your average 12- to 15-day review, was that commercial?
Commercial only.
Okay.
Yep. Residential, our goal is five days or less. And I believe as of this week, we're getting close to back down to that five-day or less.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you. Chad, if you had your druthers or wish list and talk about your FTEs, if you had to increase this year, like in your inspector category, which inspectors would you increase and why?
At this point, from inspections, if you, through all sections, mechanical, electrical, plumbing.
Yes.
Really, right now, we're doing pretty well. I'd say the first group that will likely need to look to increase, if the permitting activity growth stays the same, is probably going to be our building inspectors. They are going out there approaching almost 20 scheduled inspections a day. And if any of you have a day that you dedicate to running errands, trying to get to five different locations is challenging enough. But 20 different inspections and locations is stuff. So that would probably be the first group that we're going to need to look at adding an inspector.
Thank you.
Any other quick ones? All right. Thank you so much.
And with that, I'll invite Mr. Carey.
We've got Director Carey for about 15 minutes.
I'm on the clock. I understand. Thank you very much for your time today. Starting out, do want to say that if you're following in the budget book, we are on, start on page 167. When we look at these budget focus areas that are on the screen right now, it's very nice to be a part of the planning department, the part of the planning field, because we really touch all of these. We can talk offline about any number of projects or work items that we have, that we touch, all these different budget focus areas. And so it's nice to be able to do that. It's nice to be able to say that we're involved in a lot of different things, and we have an influence on the work of the city. So that is a good thing. When we look at our mission statement, and this is on our website, and this is what we work from, I like to highlight the word facilitates in that. We do a lot of work with a lot of different stakeholders, pretty much every single city and county, department and agency at some point throughout any given year. So we feel good about the work that we do and the influence that we have in a positive way in getting this community to move forward into the next year and into the long-term future. And a lot of our work is based on that with our comprehensive plan and then drawing down those policies and guidelines down to our day-to-day work with ongoing projects and the growth of our city. A quick overview of our department. We are a city and county department. So we work with the mayor, as well as the city council, as well as the county board. We have several different boards and commissions that we work with. And that is how we get a lot of our processes done. A lot of our approvals are done through the board and commission process. We have an administrative arm that I'll talk in more depth later as part of one of the changes that's proposed in this budget. And then we have the basic parts of it is development review, which is zoning, subdivision of land, a lot of ongoing active work with projects out in the community. And then we have IT services, which really is our data development and services and mapping, GIS, and support of our software and programming. And then long-range planning is where we do our comprehensive plan work, subarea plans, the capital improvement program work, and the metropolitan planning organization, transportation planning work. So a lot of different parts to what we do. I would like to call ourselves an efficient and impactful department. We don't, we're not very large, but we get a lot done with what we have. And we're proud of that. When we look at our outcomes, goals, and performance measures, these measures haven't changed since last year. But I will point out that when you look at the first item, which is looking at our travel time to work, and this is based on the census data for that, trying to make sure that we are at least 60% travel time of less than 20 minutes. We are meeting that. We're getting close to the 60%. That is somewhat a function of a growing city. But this is a good indicator of our livability here. This is what really draws people to Lincoln, that we can have some big-city positives while not having too many of the big-city negatives. And travel to work and traveling around the community is quite efficient, and we want to maintain that. I would also point out that on the bottom, our cost of living is very competitive. We know that we have an increasing cost of housing. We have been focusing on that work. So we're not saying that that isn't an issue. But when we compare ourselves to other like cities, we do quite well. We're very competitive that way. We want to work on that and continue to work on that, especially in the affordable housing sector and the realm of that topic, which you all have been engaged on that, and I appreciate that. So let's look at kind of what's been happening directly with the planning department. If you look at the last 12 years of activity, and we look at a number of applications that we've processed, the first six years, we were down at about 420 applications per year. That has gone up and stayed up to around over 500. So that 21% increase in the most recent six years is staying elevated. And we did not slow down during COVID. We actually increased our activity last year. And then so far to date this year, year-over-year comparison, we are up another 5.5% in the amount of raw applications. So that's good news. As a city, we want to see that. We are very busy, similar to what Chad mentioned as far as inspectors. There's a lot going on, and we have a lot of work to do, and we're glad to do it. But it's, there's a lot to do, let's put it that way. So we feel good about that. Part of the reason for that is we continue to grow. Those of you that have been engaged in our long-range planning effort for the new comprehensive plan, we know our projections for population show that we're going to grow as a city by about another 100,000 people over the next 30 years. And so what that breaks down to is about 30,000 to 35,000 more people every single decade. We're very consistent growth. The last decade, we saw that growth happen. We also annexed almost 10 square miles, excuse me. And so with that, we have a lot of, we have more work to do. We have areas to focus on. We have more people to serve. And that's just going to continue, not just this next year, but over the next decades. So that's something to keep in mind as we talk about this. Two significant changes I want to highlight that are in the planning budget proposal. One is a 1.7% application fee for our applications. We did not execute the 2.26% fee increase. That was part of the budget last year, mainly due because of the uncertainty of COVID. We didn't feel like that made sense when we didn't know what was going to happen. So we sat on that, and we didn't proceed with that. However, the concept of doing a every-single-budget process, an annual increase, in this case, what we're proposing is based on the Midwest region's Consumer Price Index, which is a way to get it drilled down to more of what we're experiencing here for costs. We would like to do that and like to have that first installment of that for this one-year budget. So that's a 1.7%. It's not a big number for revenue. It's about $3,900 based on expected applications. But it's a good practice, and we want to do that. We want to institute that for the first time with this budget. I would like to emphasize the next significant change, which is the proposal to add an administrative A2 position to the administrative arm of our department. When we look at the increase of 21% and the remaining elevated increase of application activity and activity in general that has happened, we have a very important need to fill here on the administrative arm of our department. What this person will do is will really directly assist us to process those applications and to make sure that we can do the level of service that people have become accustomed to getting from our department. And I want to be able to keep doing that. And we've talked about this for several years, but we felt like this was the year to formally request it. And we want to get this position added into the budget. I will note that what this does is this replaces a lost position from last year. So we did our part as we went into the pandemic to say, okay, we're going to tighten our belts. We did not fill an open position for 10 months, and we also wrote out of the budget a position that was vacated through retirement. So this really only gets us back to the level of FTEs that we had two years ago. But it's an important one, and we really would like to have that decision be part of this budget. To look at that again in a little bit more detail, we, basically, the administrative arm goes from four to five. But then, as you can see there, the long-range planning side went from seven down to six and remains at six. So that means our FTEs will be the same as it was in FY 1920, one more than this past fiscal year. One of the reasons why we need this position, in addition to the overall increase in activity, is that we have gone to a digital process for all of our comments and processing over the last five years or so, which has been a great thing for service to the public. And the public has noticed this, and it's become very easy for people to get involved in our process, to send off an email, keep it digital, and they feel like they are part of the process because they are part of the process. It becomes part of the record. But that doesn't mean it's less work for us on the administrative side of the process. So combining that increased load of involvement from the public in a digital form, we also have just the, the raw volume of activity has increased. And so this is the time to get this position in. It will be, it's the right position to do this work. And just want to leave it on that and answer questions as they come. To look at the overall numbers, what I would like to point out here, we are a general fund department. All of our funding comes from the general fund. We do, however, get significant amount of fees that come in through our applications that offset a lot of that cost. And we also get a lot of intergovernmental, both from the county and from the federal government. So about 48% of that general fund cost is offset by the revenues that we bring in. So it's something that we want to just highlight today. So last year, we'd like to say that we met the moment. We saved the city quite a bit of money, especially for a department our size, by not filling those positions and by cutting a position. We also got a lot accomplished. I am very proud of the work that we did. You all helped us as well to kind of get through the pandemic year. We had to change protocols with our public meetings. We did that. We did it safely. We continued the work of the city. We got a lot done. The 2020 census process was completed. That was a big lift. That was a weird ending to that, to be honest with you, because of the pandemic, but we got it done. The significant work of the comprehensive plan continued. We did a lot of it virtually, but we got a lot of good work done. And we're still on track to get it done this upcoming fall. So we really continued the elevated level of activity despite the pandemic. And then finally, we look forward to this next year and then beyond that. So we'd like to say that we're looking to the future, literally and figuratively. So when you think about the comprehensive plan, that's well into the future, but that's something that's going to happen in the first quarter of this new fiscal year. And we're really looking forward to finishing that work effort. We have to continue to work on affordable housing. There's a lot of work to do there. That discussion is not going to go away, nor should it. We are going to continue to meet the demands of growth in our community. That is, like I said earlier, we are up 5.5% from the elevated level of last year for applications. And oftentimes, not a real popular topic, but an annexation study is on our horizon. So I'm just giving you a heads-up on that. But that is the good work that we do. It's necessary work, and that's something that we want to get talking about. So with that, I will stop, and I will answer any questions that you have. And certainly, I'm available offline as needed.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Are there any quick questions? Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, real quick. How does counties' fee get figured in?
Yeah, good question. So what happens with the county, we have an intergovernmental agreement that basically says that they will match 20% of whatever the cost of our budget is. So that is, that ends up just being kind of a payment back to the city.
Okay. Councilwoman Washington?
So is that payment from the county just going back to the general?
Yes.
It doesn't necessarily come right back to planning?
Correct. So that number and then the money we get from federal government for transportation planning, for example, as well as our revenues, that just basically goes, oops, sorry, the general fund. Yep.
Councilman Beck is?
So the FT that you dropped, that's not coming back. That was Ed's role?
Correct.
And Stacy's taking a hybrid role?
Stacy and Colin Christopher both.
Okay.
Yep. So we felt like we were in position staff-wise to meet the needs of that loss of a position with the existing staff.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Director Lopez with the Health Department.
Good afternoon. Just to kind of start where we're at, I just need to make sure I can use this. Yeah. So I'll talk about how we're addressing these five major areas in our budget this year. You know, as you know, our mission at Lincoln Lancaster, whoops. Here we go. I could try and do David Carey's. I don't think I could do it justice. Okay. Our mission is to protect and promote the public's health and we do this by monitoring the community's health status and developing plans through our inclusive engagement of our community members to address and identify needs and gaps that are really important for our safe and healthy city. And we also assure that all our community members experience a safe and healthy city through access to clean air, safe food, water and homes. We work on an equitable and inclusive city through engagement of health systems, our providers, our community partners and our community members to improve access to services and improve health outcomes. We also protect the health and safety of the community from communicable diseases through primary prevention and effective management of outbreaks. So looking at how we do that, we do primary prevention for immunizations, ensuring that the public is adequately vaccinated for a wide range of preventable diseases such as measles, whooping cough, mumps and tetanus, to name a few. And just so you know, we've continued to provide immunizations throughout the time of the pandemic by appointment safely in the clinic. When there is sufficient population immunity, are often referred to as herd immunity, as you've heard many times during the past 15 months, the individual cases of disease can be isolated and they don't spread rapidly, which protects our whole community and particularly those who have immune system and our, whose immune systems are compromised. And we also work to prevent rabies exposure from animal bites through pet licensing, licensing and animal control. And as you all know, vaccinations have been our key public health tool. In the pandemic, you can see the chart I've shared with you previously, as our vaccination numbers went up, our case numbers and deaths dramatically changed in our community. And our vaccine clinics really were a great success in this community because of the great community we live in and due to the hundreds of volunteers who showed up every time and worked with us. We work to protect the health and safety of our families and communities through monitoring incidence of infectious disease and managing outbreaks. Each year, the department responds to outbreaks of disease. The most common are influenza and norovirus and there are multiple events each year in food establishments, schools, childcare, retirement communities and nursing homes. The department also monitors influenza closely using information throughout the year from medical providers, labs, hospitals and through school absenteeism in a routine process. We also do monitoring of incidents of rabies and wildlife. In Lincoln right now, this is primarily bats and we did have our first case of a rabid bat last week. We also are, issue regular health alerts to healthcare providers. We follow national, regional trends to understand what we might face. And one of the early lessons from the pandemic was that the communicable disease program was seriously understatized. So we added two additional nurses for disease investigation. As you can see, each case is investigating and that includes a contact tracing and notification. In addition, we added over 40 temporary individuals to assist us with the disease investigation. Then we also, I'm just looking here, monitor. Okay. So just talking about how we respond to cases and outbreaks, one of the things is our communicable disease team gathers data. We determine when, where and how the disease is spreading and identify all the infected individuals. Then we have to analyze the data and identify steps to interrupt the spread of the disease. To respond to the magnitude of the pandemic, our team set up an enhanced disease investigation tool for contact tracing on short notice. And also the dashboard that you're looking at now was developed by our health team. So during the past year, we responded to also to cases of tuberculosis, E. coli, norovirus. And our influenza, as I've shared with you previously, was very low. The number, we only had 21 cases this last year, this last season, which was unbelievable. We're starting to see some RSV in small, in children right now, which isn't the usual time of year when it happens. So we're monitoring that closely. So during this whole process, our communication was really critical with the public and with our providers and all others. So that indicated and assisted us by adding our public information officer who developed many of the materials we were able to send out in the community along with the communications team from the mayor's office. So you know, comparing our COVID case rates and deaths with the five largest populated counties, Lancaster County had 9,941 cases for 100,000, which is 22% lower than Douglas County. And we were also the second lowest county with a rate of 7.6 deaths per thousand of COVID-19 in the state. So I think that that helps illustrate the actions that were taken and supported by you really made a big difference in our community. Then I wanted to share with you, we also shared with you at last year's budget meeting that we really had a critical need for an additional epidemiologist. And we have added that one full-time epidemiologist and it's been a tremendous assistance in carrying on what we have to do. Our team, our health team are the experts in providing health, public health data and analysis. We used to get chunks of data to view once a month or once a year. Now it's flooding in daily for us to look at. So selecting the best sources and creating tools to organize, analyze and report the information is really critical. And the Health Department has experienced about a tenfold increase in the amount and type of information available to assess and monitor health in the past five years. And that's likely to continue over the next five years. The data provided through the city's open data is used by many organizations and agencies and individuals each year. So we strive to keep that up to date. And we also provide data analysis and reporting services and support for monitoring and evaluating the effectiveness of government. And we engage the community members who collaborate to solve community-wide issues that help us work towards setting priorities. Then looking at a few of our other age areas, our planning and decision-making, in 2021, the Health Department, in collaboration with our local hospitals, began the community health assessment and community health improvement planning process as required by statutes. Now, this meets the hospital's regulatory and accreditation standards as well as public health accreditation standards. And it's the first time that our hospital's been actively engaged in using the same community health assessment data going forward. So that will be a great improvement that we're all working on a comprehensive plan together. We did implement a qualitative assessment and it was a brief survey during the same time we were doing things and it uses a spatial statistical sampling process. And I can't say that fast. With oversampling for specific vulnerable populations. And one of the other things we did was engage our cultural center collaborative and worked with them and provided them some resources to assist us in oversampling and reaching out into the various racial and ethnic minority communities to get more feedback. And now our process, the next step is engaging in community conversations that will hold in collaboration with the cultural centers, our homeless coalitions, our neighborhoods and other key stakeholders to get additional information about what our community is seeing. And we've also talked with planning about information that they need that we can try and help collect in some ways to inform that. So, and just as a reminder, our re-accreditation status, I can't believe that, is coming up. We were first accredited at Lincoln Lancaster in June of 2017. So next June will be that process. So we're working towards putting together what we need to have. Then the next area I just want to share with you a little bit about is our, our health and safety of families in the community. And I think you're all familiar that we have a healthy families program that works with pregnant and parenting women. And 80% of our mothers were screening positive for depression and they completed a mental health referral with the work we done. The other thing that I think is really important is related to abuse and neglect. Of our almost 500 children served, only six or 1.3% had a substantiated case of child abuse or neglect. And in early childhood development, I think this is really critical as we all know that shapes the future. 88% of the children served were not at risk for developmental delay and those other 12% were referred and connected in our receiving services through Lincoln Public Schools. And that timing is so critical in early identification and getting the connections done. The other area I just wanted to highlight a little bit to you is, you know, our staff take calls from the public. We've always done that and helped them to access services, link them to healthcare. We do enroll people in Medicaid and try and assist them through the process. We have culturally and linguistically trained staff available. We have multiple languages among our staff. They represent our community. In the calendar year, just to give you an idea, 2020, our information referral stat helped enroll 120 individuals in Medicaid and an additional 120 in other insurance that they might be eligible for. And we made 350 medical referrals. From March of 2019 through February 2020, we received 10,558 calls. From March of 2020 through February of 2021, our calls more than doubled to 22,487. We added the COVID hotline that provided 24/7 access to a nurse who assisted the callers with COVID questions. And on that line, we received almost 63,000 calls that we addressed. So once we started to provide vaccinations, we added the vaccination registration call line. And many of the city departments and county departments provided us assistance in helping our community members get access. So on that line, we took over close to almost 123,000 calls. So it was busy. Then, you know, we also work through other things in providing health and safety. And one of those is the dental clinic and I just want to highlight a few things in there. 70% of our patients were, are children. 81% were either enrolled in Medicaid and were enrolled in Medicaid and 84% were racial or ethnic minorities or other non-English speakers. We provide interpretation service in-house and through language link. We've been able to hire staff who are bilingual. So they have successful employment in providing something and they're also able to engage more fully with the patients coming in, which is tremendous. We provide language for 15 languages other than English in our clinics and our demand has continued to grow. We were one of the only dental offices opened initially during the pandemic and so we continue to provide the major source of emergency services. So to better meet the demand that's been increasing for us, we're requesting an additional full-time dental hygienist and this will be paid for by fee, by fees that we secure. We also have added extra hours for children and families. We're working with schools. We're working with Cedars. We work with Early Head Start, EduCare and all the WIC sites throughout the community to provide dental access and in addition to collaborating with the public schools. So you know, the need for oral healthcare really is one of the most prevalent unmet healthcare needs among children and adolescents. And it's really hard to learn if you have a toothache at school. So this is one of the things that, you know, I'm, I think we all should feel really proud of that our department's able to provide these services and also work in collaboration with our community dentists and with Blue Stem Health and get people into the care that they need. We have a great ability to provide people, especially some of our adults that come in to specialty care that they really desperately need. So now let's talk about animal control. So you can see by the numbers, animal bites in 2020 went down. And I think that probably was due to, you know, how many people were out and about. Our, we started a new shift schedule on January 7th of this year and we really did that to better serve the public during our high demand months between May and October, which is primarily driven by the bats. And this is starting already to reduce overtime and it really allows a much quicker response to the call. I'm really proud of our division. They worked together, all the staff, to figure out how we could do this and work a schedule that provided them a safe environment, but really was responsive to the community. And we added no additional personnel to do this. We just were able to shift around, analyze, analyze our data and figure out how to do that. From June 14th through June, from June 14th, 2020 through June 14th, 2021, animal control dispatchers and officers received 222 calls from the public regarding coyotes. That's been one of our big things. This is the time when they're having pups. So these calls came in from all quadrants of the city and, but the majority were from the eastern side of the city. Animal control provided public education, put up signage. We met with neighbors that were concerned in the different areas, talked about it. We met with parks and rec, put in some other abilities to address this. We're using trail cams to document coyote activity and our officers are walking the trails and controlling the neighborhoods too as well, to be really responsive. And we put up signage in the park and asked people to please not feed the coyotes and to, you know, use something to distract them. You know, we get really concerned when they become too friendly and aren't. I do know somebody's been using one of those horns out there to scare them off. So we're continuing to work on that and we're working with federal wildlife because they have the authority to make some changes. And what we're really trying to do is move the coyotes on to somewhere else, but this is a major issue in many urban areas of the country. So we're keeping up on that. I just want you to know and we're just as concerned as our community members are. So I think you all know about environmental health, that we provide food handler training, do multiple things in working with the restaurants, not only going out and doing inspections, but during the time of COVID, we also worked with them to provide other resources and activities and how they could operate business safely during this time. We have a lot of classes in person at the Health Department and we offer them in Spanish and other areas and we assist people in getting their, their classes completed. Then we have our protecting our water. So our onsite wastewater treatment system installer permitting, private well permits, 671 we're doing, 708 wells were tested, just to give you. you an idea. And we work with our public swimming pools and spas and offer certified pool operator and pool tester training. And that's been really effective in cutting down incidents of issues in the pool. Then, talking about our HAS TO GO, I just want to say that we didn't meet our goal, you can see, in fiscal year 20, the HAS TO GO Center was closed for three months and two mobile house waste collection events were canceled. But in mid-July of 2020, we returned to, returned to normal levels, and we saw surge in participation. And the quantity of waste being bought there has continued into this year. So, to date, in fiscal year 21, we've exceeded the pounds of household hazardous waste collected in each of the past six fiscal years already. So, they've collected over 113,000 pounds. So, that is, means that that is diverted from the landfill and from households in our community. So, that's really exciting. Our next area is air quality. Ninety-five, over ninety-five percent of our days measured in the good category for air quality. Most days that were not in the good category of air quality were moderate or yellow, though there were two days in 2020 where the 24-hour surveillance was, indicated was unhealthy for sensitive groups. And those are the times when you see us issue a press release and get information out. And I think we're all familiar about the, the burn-off from Kansas. We do have multiple agencies now working, both from Kansas and Nebraska and the environmental controls, to meet and talk about how this can done. Still, our air quality in Lancaster County continues to meet the EPA quality standards, and we're not having a significant public health risk. So, our next area is really our injury prevention activities. You can see those in what the childcare centers. We do a lot of car inspections for seat belts, transportation, bike and pedestrian safety resources are provided. We do a lot of work with the childcare centers, and during this past year, we provided a lot of guidance to them and support in working through how to operate safely during the pandemic. So we have a whole team that works with that. The next area, just to give you a little more on chronic disease prevention, our health promotion area really leads the Lancaster County Crusade against colon cancer. We do a lot to decrease tobacco and nicotine use. And then, I think you've heard, the city and county employee wellness, both the health screening, and we were able to provide influenza vaccines at a cost savings for the city and county this past year. So I'll just move us on to our organizational chart, and this just shows you our different divisions. The Health Department has seven divisions, the Director's Office, Community Health Services, where the public health clinics and home services are through, our Health Promotion Office, and then our Dental Health and Nutrition, which also includes WIC. And then Environmental Health, I just talked to you about their various areas. And Animal Control has dispatch, field services, and license and permits in their area. And then in our Public Health Informatics and Planning is our epidemiology, communicable disease, information management, and emergency preparedness, as well as accreditation. Our budget from the health fund, our employees from the health fund, you can see, are 116.9 FTEs. And our budget is 16,667, or 16 million, I wish it was 16,000. So do you. Sixteen million, 667,676 dollars. And of that, you can see user fees is almost really comparable to the general fund we also receive, because we're city-county, there's the county portion of that funding is in there, the ocftax as well. But this amount includes our animal control and Title V funding in there as well. And it's all broken down for you, and you can let me know if you have any questions in those areas. But just again, on a different picture of our health fund and what our budget is for this year, this coming year, '21, '22, 13,240,851. And our Animal Control is a separate fund, and there you see the amount that comes in from licensing that. We moved a lot to online to assist, and we're still working through some of those areas and continue to monitor efficiency. We've been able to decrease postage and other things to improve that and doing follow-up on licensing to get those reissued. Then our Clean Air and our BST funds, our BST was transferred out and will be in our health fund now, and then our Clean Air funding is in there. I spoke to you about our dental hygienist that'll be paid for out of fees. We anticipate another additional 1,800 preventative appointments and allows us to do earlier diagnosis of our treatment needs, which reduces costs. Then our Enhanced City Wellness, through some of our health fund savings, we're going to add an intern, an epidemiologist, that will assist us in developing a health risk appraisal for employees and work through that to address programs and services to reduce healthcare costs for the city and the county. We also shared with you last year some of these things, and I mentioned these in the budget. Our communicable disease and epidemiology areas were understaffed, and our Public Information Officer, as well as hiring environmental health specialists to really work with event plans and those other services, and they'll continue working in that area. And add, we found that that was really something that was really important to businesses. It's not just restaurants, it's everywhere that people, questions and needs. We've been paying through that for some, through billing that we've been able to do for COVID relief, and we'll continue that and not move it right now to the, the city budget. We're going to continue to use those funds. So, our grants and contracts right now add additional 55 FTEs, and we currently, you can see the total there is a little, almost 6.5 million. And that we expect to increase. We were just notified that for Minority Health Initiative, we've received money to do a community health assessment, and so we're partnering with our Cultural Center Collaborative and other community members to get that done. We're also receiving some funds to address health inequities from COVID, from CDC. These were things that were just given to us. We do have a couple proposals in to see if we can receive additional money to help address inequities in the community. So I'll keep you posted on those as we keep going forward. So, our performance measures are in here, most of them have not changed. Some of them we were able to meet, such as our nuisance complaints was still up some. We want, we were, excuse me, we were above where we were set for there, and our good air quality. We're still working on our contact tracing and disease investigation. I think when you have the full year, it'll be in good shape. So, the same standards as we had last year, we're going to do that, follow that again in supporting with dental and environmental hazards. So, I just wanted to add, kind of at the end here, just where some of our data guides our interactions and what we do. And we worked really closely with City IT, and I want to say kudos to them. We brought up one of the first state vaccination registry programs, and it's been a tremendous success. And we're continuing to use that, and we'll be able to hopefully migrate that into some of our med, our health record, our electronic medical records. So we'll continue working on that. And then everything we do with the dashboard, we work with City IT, and they have been unparalleled in their support at our clinics and doing everything. But the innovation and the ability to stand things up so quickly is really, just really remarkable, and has been a tremendous benefit to our community. And that's it.
Are there any questions for Director Lopez? Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you. Thanks, Director Lopez. So a couple of things. One shout-out for the HAS TO GO program. I was one of those waiting. My family found out, and I had all of their wares as well, and it's so cool if you have, I know, my car was full, I never got out of it. You just pop your trunk open and drive through. If you haven't done it, you need to do that, Council. So, my thanks to that crew. You may have mentioned this, so forgive me for asking, the 40 temps that were hired during the pandemic, what happens to them? Are they still working?
Some of, some of them still are, and we'll continue to work with them, have some of them work with us. We have some vacancies, we're also doing follow-up for people that haven't gotten their second dose. We still have clinics, so we're working with them. And many of them might be looking for full-time employment, a lot of them were not, they already had a full-time job, so they were just assisting us with contact tracing. A good example is the school nurses.
Oh, right, that's right.
And some of the nurses working out at the hospital. But in some of the other areas, we've been able to connect some of those folks to some open positions.
That's great. They were phenomenal. I don't have to tell you that. They really were great, the clinics I was able to visit, so I was curious. Also, and I was looking at your information, so epidemiologists, so now we have one full-time and one assistant epidemiologist, is that correct?
No, we actually have, we have our epidemiology supervisor, then we have two other full-times and one three-quarter time.
Okay, so three and three-quarters.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Just trying to keep track of that. So, back to animal control, because we have talked a lot about coyotes and bats, but I was on my patio last weekend, and a fox almost ran over my toe. But, so, which is, they're beautiful. I know that our community seems to have a love affair with foxes. I was startled, however, it was early in the morning, I'd had not had enough coffee. But do they fall in the same category as what we're doing in terms of the coyotes as far as trying to stay ivy? I think every neighborhood has a fox, right? Everybody's posting about foxes.
We have two that actually live in our yard.
Okay, well, I have one, and I not, you know, I would like to see him find a better home.
They generally, we don't have as many complaints about foxes. But just like everything else, we tell people, please don't feed them.
Right.
You know?
Right.
And generally, we don't have as many complaints, to be honest with you, about foxes. I think because they're timid and move away from us quickly. Whereas some of our coyotes have become more domesticated, if you will.
I assumed so.
They're not really, they're wild animals, but.
They are. Well, I was startled, and they are beautiful, but they do not belong on patios either, so I was just curious as to if that was part of our program as well. So, I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Washington?
My question was about epidemiology as well, because I was having a hard time making the numbers match up when I looked down the list. But I'm glad that Councilwoman Ward asked the question, and I'll just go through it one more time and make sure that I understand, because it looked like one epidemiologist position had been eliminated. And I don't think that's the case, it might be a typo. Okay, thanks.
No, we haven't eliminated.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other quick questions? Okay, same then. Thank you so much for coming out. And then I will look to, since we're at 2:00 and we're a little ahead scheduled, we will have either the Public Building Commission or Emergency Management go first, if either of them are here? Or Sarah wants to come back.
Absolutely. Well, good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'm Sarah Hoyle, I'm the Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. So, do you want me to start, or do you want me to wait? Go ahead, okay, perfect. Okay, just to give you an overview of our office, and I know that you're familiar with that, but just a quick overview, the, our office is half county, half city, but it's not an even 50/50 split. There are certain things within my budget that are primarily county responsibility. So if you look at the office overview, we have an accounting specialist that is 100% of the county's responsibility. Um, I have, you know what, I do, I have a budget, would that help? No? Okay, all righty. Okay, all righty. And so our basic office overview, 100% county responsibility is our accounting specialist. And then the county and the city have an even split between myself, the admin assistant that we have, our juvenile justice coordinator, our assessment specialist, our pre-adjudication specialist, which is 100% grant-funded, and then we have two caseworkers that are also 100% grant-funded. So our office has three primary responsibilities, and those are obviously human services, which is why I'm here, our liaison work with our nonprofit agencies, juvenile justice, and then the third one is cremation assistance to those in the county that need assistance with their loved ones. And I am sorry, you don't have handouts.
It is on our PowerPoint that can be used. It's like a slide 80.
Okay. Okay. And you have the budget, or do you want to, I brought copies of the actual budget, if that's helpful. Okay. Here we go. This is just an overview of some of the services that we provide. I'll touch briefly on a couple of them as we the city or the county. So in state funds, we administer about 2 million funds where we're actually writing the grant and bringing dollars into the community, and then about 1.5 million in federal funding. The JBC numbers are right there. And then juvenile justice prevention funds, 400,000 from the county, and then the city is the 545,900, which is about a 3% increase from what we had asked last year. Okay, the budget that you have in front of you is the budget request that we have for the current year. As you can see, it's about $1,000 less than it was last year, and that is just because we received more grant funding than we did previously. So the grant offsets the overall budget amount that we're asking for. Most of our budget is personnel, there's some rent, information systems, and then the data piece here is the contract that we have with the University of Nebraska to evaluate our programs for us. Any questions on that or the budget that you have in front of you? And our budget, primarily here, the, it's about, the county is responsible for about half of it, city a little over a quarter, and then we bring in about a quarter from grants. The Joint Budget Committee is comprised of two elected officials from this county, two elected officials from the city, and then there's a county representative and a city representative that serves on it. So your, your city council members this year for the Joint Budget Committee are Sandra Washington and James Michael Powers. So, yes, they serve, they, the Joint Budget Committee primarily reviews recommendations from, we have two committees that review all of the Joint Budget Committee grant applications. They make recommendations then to the actual JBC, the committee I just described, and then that goes in front of the board or the city council, depending upon if it's city or county dollars. The priorities that we have in these funds are for food, victim safety, shelter, adult behavioral health, and youth behavioral health. And then this is the process that I just described. This just gives you an overview of the Joint Budget Committee funding history. So the blue line represents the dollar amount that the county puts in, and the orange line is the dollar amount that the city puts in. So as you can see, during the recession period around 2008, the county's portion dipped significantly. And we're fortunate in that we have county commissioners that are dedicated to getting that number back up to where it was pre-recession. So we are almost there. That's exciting. The agencies are very thankful that we're able to fund them at the level that they were previously funded prior to the recession. We're just about there. The other thing, too, that we've talked a lot about with JBC and where we want to go and what our vision is, is for the longest period of time, and as you can see, the lines, the, the graph there, it shows there hasn't been much change in the amount of funding other than when we've taken funding away from them, right? But with that being said, we know that our agency's budget increases every year, right? You have cost of living, you have different things that contribute to increases in your budget, but we've never allowed that for these JBC agencies. So that's why this year we're coming with a 3% increase in the city budget that we're asking for, for the Joint Budget Committee. And the funds for Joint Budget Committee, again, primarily they go to fund behavioral health supports, shelter, victim safety, food. This is a breakdown of that. The city contributions, this is primarily where the city contributions go. And that was for this last fiscal year. For the current fiscal year, we're not make, we don't make recommendations until we have the final dollar amount approved through the budget process. This is kind of hard to read on here, so I apologize, but this is an example of what we've been able to contract with through the University of Nebraska as far as collecting those output measures that we've talked about. For the longest period of time, we've had the agencies report into a database that was general in nature, and it was kind of hard to get exact information from them on how they were contributing to the city of Lincoln, how they were really helping with what we were doing. And now with the University of Nebraska on, they're actually helping these nonprofit agencies collect this data and present it in a meaningful manner. So not only is it helping us and helping them by telling their story, it's helping us so that we can share this information with citizens, but it's also helping these agencies, because with this information, they're able to apply for additional funding and they're able to bring in additional dollars to our community. So it's been very beneficial. Keynote funding, this is what keynote funding has been over the last five years. Okay. And then this, I never miss an opportunity to talk about what we're doing in our office as far as the specific services that we provide. So just to give you a refresher or a brief overview, depending upon where you're coming from, our early assessment process is really about serving kids at the right time with the right intervention, right? So we know, working with kids, either you've been a kid or you've raised kids, right? We know that kids just do stupid things, right? Yeah, they do stupid things. Now, I know that doesn't apply to you as elected officials, that you've never done anything stupid, but, but with kids, we know that they do, and we know that their brains are not developed until they're about age 25, right? So with that being said, in our county and in our city, we have the opportunity of having an assessment specialist. So whenever a youth is picked up by a law enforcement officer, then that screening, part of the screening process, that referral goes to our assessment specialist who has a social work degree. She calls the family, she calls the kid, she does a screening with them, she makes a recommendation to the county attorney's office as to how we should proceed with the case, as far as what the family already has in place and what additional things we need. We know that there's not a lot that we can do to restore a kid, to rehabilitate a kid outside of what a family can do, right? So if the family has handled the situation, what more, as we as taxpayers, do we need to do to this family if it's already been addressed, right? So that's part of the assessment specialist, is how can we help you with your child? How can we help hold your child accountable? What, what can we help do? And if the family says, look, I've got it, we've, it was a shoplifting case, we've paid back the store, we've apologized, what else needs to be done? And that's kind of the recommendation that goes into this. Diversion, these are just sharing some of, now you'll notice as we go through these, I don't have 2020 numbers in here, and that's because none of us really know how to weigh 2020 numbers when we're going through these. So next year, we'll have those added in here, but it's to put those numbers on a graph. It just doesn't make a lot of sense right now unless we go through, there needs to be a different way to present this, but. So with diversion, we know, too, with kids, and this is something that is really important that we track, the number of days from the actual offense until the number of days that they come into our program. So when we first started with diversion, it was taking about three months. Now, you know, in a kid's life, a lot can happen in three months. And so what was happening when we were getting ahold of them is maybe they were coming in for an assault. And when we were talking to the youth and we were talking to the family, like, oh yeah, that assault was with my friend Jane, but she spent the night last night. So what are we doing here? And the problem had been resolved, but yet here we are as a system, trying to take the family back three months to address the issue. So we knew if we wanted to really be effective with kids, we had to get in there fast. And so that was something with, we worked with law enforcement on how to process these tickets and get them off people's desks, over to the county attorneys, and then actually getting kids the services that they need. And I want to mention, too, that we have two staff working on diversion, two staff. Okay? And so the magic with kids is not done in our office. The magic is done in the community. I have two caseworkers that, that do the case management component of it, but they are referred, every single child is referred to a community agency. And that's because we want to be in and out of these kids' lives. We don't want to be a permanent member there, but we want our community organizations to be permanent in their life. We want them to know that if they need help, if they need something, they can go to our community organizations to get that. This is just our overall enrollment rate. Again, we really started being creative with how we got kids and families to trust us, to get us to sign up. That involved texting people. It even involved staff learning how to Snapchat kids. So, but we were able to get that enrollment rate up, and then also our minority enrollment rate. That was something, too, where we knew we had to be creative. We reached out to our cultural centers, to LPS liaisons, to build trust with that family, to get them to come in for diversion. Recidivism, two, oh, successful discharge. We're a little bit higher with successful discharge than the state average, and then our recidivism rate is lower. So, and the, how we measure recidivism is we measure it at six months, 12 months, and then 18 months. So what you see in front of you here is a 12-month figure. And it's if, because diversion is really looking at law enforcement contacts, we're looking at the number of law enforcement contacts. So it's not if they're prosecuted, it's actual, if they've been contacted by law enforcement. And then restore, real fast, I want you to know about all of our programs. Restore is our school-based program that we have. Essentially, we were looking on our reducing racial and ethnic disparity committee, on how we could really make an impact on reducing the number of minority youth we had entering the juvenile justice system. And so we knew we had work to do in the schools and the number of referrals coming from the schools. So we partnered with a school, and we saw that the two highest offenses coming out of the schools were assaults and disturbing the peace. We also reached out to Georgetown University. They helped us craft this program, and since then, these have been the results. We've, the school's been happy, excuse me, we've been happy, the county attorney, with really the progression of this. And this is just showing the number of minority youth entering Restore compared to diversion or the other school-based program we have, which is Substance Abuse and Marijuana Intervention Program. Okay, and then lastly, we have our truancy diversion program. Again, numbers for 2021, 1920, 2021 look really off-place on this graph, so again, we'll figure how to get those on here. But again, with truancy diversion, we started it in the high schools, and it's basically for kids that have the 20 absences or more that would have been filed on in court. What was happening, happening with our truant kids is they were being suspended for being truant. So they were being asked to stay at home when they didn't attend school, which wasn't a lot for kids that didn't want to go to school anyways. It wasn't helping them tremendously. So we worked with our court. We have a judge for the high schools that goes to the school, meets with the kid and the family after school. We have in-home supports, working with the family, that the kids don't miss school time to go to court, and they don't miss school. They're given incentives for actually being in school. We just started this last year with middle schools, with doing restorative circles for kids that are truant in middle schools. So we have a trained facilitator that comes in, meets with the family, family supports, our caseworker, and then people from the school, and they help the family craft the plan on how they'll address the truencies. And then our pre-adjudication services, which is not diversion, but which is another component of what our office does, essentially when law enforcement takes a youth to the detention center to lodge them, probation meets them there, and they do a risk assessment on them. If they're eligible to be released to the community, then we have a staff member through our office, but that is funded through a grant, that meets the law enforcement officer at the detention center, hooks up electronic monitoring bracelet to them, and then supervises them in the community. Looks a little bit different than adult court in that you'll see the offenses here. We take primarily any offense, as long as the youth scores appropriately on the risk assessment. So we have had youth on there for manslaughter, for gun offenses, for assaults. And then this is one of our community programs. It's actually, it's one of our cop clubs that we have in the community. So it's LPD officers and our youth. They meet each other, and actually, this club, the first time that they did it, they had our law enforcement officers show up without uniforms on and just in regular street clothes. And they did that for the first three to four months. The kids built a relationship with them, and then they, they brought the families in, families built a relationship, and then the police came in in uniforms and they said, did you guys know? And they had no idea. And so, but since then, they've brought their friends. It's grown. We have to run two clubs now instead of one. Anyways, questions?
Questions for Director Hoyle?
Went through that fast, apologized. Oh, you did find handouts, right? Okay, we do have handouts.
All right, seeing no questions. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you.
Here's a question for the council. Do we want to do a 10-minute break or do we want to do a 15-minute break? Okay, let's do a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 2:35, and we'll kick off the last three presentations then. Thank you.
Looks a little bit different than adult court in that you'll see the offenses here. We take primarily any offense as long as the youth scores appropriately on the risk assessment. So we have had youth on there for manslaughter, for gun offenses, for assaults. And then this is one of our community programs. It's actually, it's one of our cop clubs that we have in the community. So it's LPD officers and our youth. They meet each other and actually, this club, the first time that they did it, they had our law enforcement officers show up without uniforms on and just in regular street clothes. And they did that for the first three to four months. The kids built a relationship with them and then they brought the families in, families built a relationship, and then the police came in in uniforms and they said, did you guys know? And they had no idea. And so, but since then, they've brought their friends, it's grown. We have to run two clubs now instead of one. Anyways, questions?
Questions for Director Hoyle?
Went through that fast, apologized. Oh, you did find handouts, right? Okay. We do have handouts.
All right. Seeing no questions, thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you.
Here's a question for the council. Do we want to do a 10-minute break or do we want to do a 15-minute break? Okay, let's do a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 2:35 and we'll kick off the last three presentations then. Thank you.
Building just to the south of that, which is 605 South Tenth. That's the old converted jail that we now have office building. And we're holding spaces for court spaces when we need to expand. Their pass through charge is $3.95. And there's a variety of reasons for that. And I can move here to my, to what I just use every year and how I remind myself of how I'm allocating security surcharges. The biggest piece of this is the eight, excuse me, the six security guards, the security guard supervisor and the security guard technician. We reimburse the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office for those costs. Those are the gentlemen that are manning the single point of the security entry over at the Hall of Justice. They are also, they also provide security for the courts up on the upper floors as well. And there's a technician involved there. They pay the lion's share of that because they reap the benefits of having those security guards. And over here at the City-County Building, we do have one roving guard, and that was just picked up maybe only four years ago. They didn't used to have one over here. We have sheriff's deputy that does patrol this building well and goes across the street. Some of those other charges that go in there include supplies, the key fobs, the entry doors, the maintenance contracts on the belt scanner and the x-ray machines and all those other security things. But I think one of the most important things too is that we have between three, two and 300 of those panic buttons underneath desks and they're placed strategically around this campus. You push that button, you get an instantaneous response. If you're over here, it's the sheriff. It goes to 911 if it's across the street. And those are important, obviously. City IS, anytime we add a camera, anytime we add a security door, and we're adding more of those all the time, there is a piece there. Information services involved in that as well. And the security equipment R and M and cameras. We have almost, almost replaced all our own analog cameras to digital cameras where you can actually see and hear some video. And it's helpful to law enforcement in case there is an issue. So that's where the security surcharge comes from. And that can change. Like, I look at that in January and just make sure that we're covering those costs for the Public Building Commission. And at these rates that, or the same rates as last year, we are. So that's my part of your budget, and I would be glad to entertain any questions.
Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah. For all this, thank you for all your hard work and being able to put this all together and keep track of all these buildings. But I got a very important question. When are we going to get healthy snacks in the machines?
Healthy snacks? Well, the contract has been signed by, I believe, two of the three entities.
Looking at David.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were going to ask when you were going to.
That's what you want to know?
Yeah.
I was waiting for something big. Very soon. And you'll have signage and it'll be, it'll be great. We let the Health Department, the Wellness Coiler take the lead on that. I was happy to pass that on to her. She's terrific.
Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Anna. Thank you so much. Sue, would you look into this year's budget? And I don't know the exact timing of Aging Partners moving to Victory Park in total, but how will that affect the rest of us who stay in these buildings?
Sure. That's a great question. The fitness center that they're in is fairly small. That is a building that is oftentimes used for swing space. If we've got a remodel going on for anybody, it's obviously a lot easier to relocate people sometimes than to, than to try to do construction around them, although we do it. We do it. That is, you know, that building itself, just that one-story building, that's a terribly underutilized piece of real estate sitting there along Ninth Street. We do own it. We can be, you know, there could be a three-story office building. There could be, we could level it for just some surface parking if we need more. That is not, that is not typically what I would like to see on Ninth Street either, but that is a possibility, and it's in a, it's in a previous study. The building on Tenth and O., that's the biggest one. And yes, that will, that will create a deficit in my budget that we would have to address. I have no needs for that building. I don't know, anybody has expressed any desire or any need to keep that, rehab it or convert it to another use. It's a little bit challenging in its location. It's challenging in that it's not really close to parking. It shares an alley with three, with two other neighbors, and that's got its challenges as well. So my thought would be, I'd like to sell it.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Is that not the plan, to sell it to help with the move? Is my understanding, but...
Correct. That's the way I understand it so far as well.
That will help. Good idea, Karen.
All right. Thank you so, thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming up presenting. And then we'll invite the folks from Emergency Management to come up next.
My name is Mark Kosicki. I'm the Deputy Emergency Manager for Lancaster County Emergency Management. Regarding this year's budget, we're coming in about $603,389, which is less than last They're broken up into two primary categories, salaries and benefits and operating expenses. Operating expenses is the higher end of our two subject line items. Out of those operating expenses, the major expenses that we have is equipment maintenance agreements, which is primarily the radio system, user infrastructure support fees, city GIS information services. Other miscellaneous contracted services is the new purchase and upgrade of outdoor warning sirens, as well as equipment at the EOC. Building rent, which we just heard from. Electricity for the outdoor warning devices as well, to maintain those. Repair and maintenance of those devices, as well as city IS services. Emergency management brings in a revenue stream. We apply for each year what's called Emergency Management Program Grant. We're eligible up to 50% of our employees' salaries and benefits. So we, this year, we're allocating $120,000 into the budget. And because we're a joint city-county agency, that brings our division down between the two agencies to $241,695 between the two. Some of the things that we've been doing through community support and involvement, 2020, obviously it was COVID-19, along with the civil unrest. 2021, the Lincoln Marathon. And then obviously coming up, Uncle Sam Jam, the National High School Finals rodeo, Kornishka State Games. And a big one for us is the Local Emergency Operations Plan, the LEAP. That is under a major revision for 2022, so we've started that process already. Questions?
Are there any questions? Great. Perfect. Thank you so much for coming out. Thank you for giving an overview. And if we have questions that pop up later, we'll reach out.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the folks from the Weed Control Authority.
We're a little ahead of schedule here. I guess like you might have a small...
That's like a speed question.
Weed control is one of my favorites.
We're ahead of schedule.
Invasive species.
Invasive. Invasive. I would say invasive, but it's invasive.
Thank you.
The smartest...
He's in the remote location, so by the time I call him, he's probably already.
Maybe he's got one for a while.
I could probably give weed for a minute.
Yeah.
It's not marijuana.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe it is. We don't know. At least don't know.
Yes.
Either way, do you want to close the session?
We'll wait until we hear from Sean Stewart with the Weed Control Authority, and until then, we'll be in a break.
All right. We will reconvene for our last budget briefing with Weed Control Authority.
Well, good afternoon. Brent Meyer with Lancaster County Weed Department. Do I drive this thing here then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, well, I tried to show up a little bit early, and I wasn't early enough. So, anyway, so Lancaster County Weed Department, I'll just get a little bit of overview of what we do out there, so you know what your money's getting spent on. And before I start, I'll just say, you know, anytime you have questions, you get comments from citizens, reach out to me. If we've got a work order on that property, we've usually got some pretty good information to help you understand what's going on on them, so. So we provide a coordinated program countywide. So it's noxious weeds countywide and weed abatement just within the city limits, and then noxious weeds also within the city limits. And we started this in our local agreement in 1996, and I think it's been very successful. We're the only major city in the state that does this. If you get a complaint and you call it into the city of Omaha, the first thing their phone system says is, you know, if this is inside city limits, call this other number. If it's outside city limits, you're at the right place. So here, it's a one-stop shop for noxious weeds and anything weed-related. The county commissioners oversee the program. And again, it's a lot more efficient and effective the way we do it here. And the main thing is it's convenient, you know? So the Uplink can be all-encompassing for everyone. So the convenience of the citizens, they don't have to try to figure out where to call. And I don't think they get the frustration that they do, maybe in Omaha or somewhere like that, where it's like, shoot, now I finally called this number, and they're telling me to call the other number. And I know too many times people feel like they get the runaround. So this is our seasonal staff. Usually it's college, college students that work for us. We get some that are able to do internships, which is pretty neat, get some class credits for it. We run the whole system out there with only three full-time employees and then 1.4 FTEs. And with that, we did last year, that's just some inspection numbers, but we can do, combined with weed abatement, noxious weeds in the city, anywhere from 6,000 to 11,000 inspections a year. So we're keeping them busy out there. And a lot of that depends on moisture, rainfall, those kind of things. And the Uplink, I'll just give a little plug for it. I like Uplink, so I don't know if that's ever anything that comes up on your agendas. But for us, we get to deal with that complaint when we have time throughout the day versus the phone call that we... And the Uplink, I'll just give a little plug for it. I like Uplink, so I don't know if that's ever anything that comes up on your agendas, but for us, we get to deal with that complaint when we have time throughout the day versus the phone call that we've got to take right there when people call. We don't, we still answer the phone live. We don't make anybody press one for this, press two for that. You know, we answer the phone and deal with them right there. Uplink, we're very popular. We are, right now, on this current quarter, the number-one requested service. And so, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but we usually are, we're usually on that property within one to two days after we get that complaint, so. And I think sometimes we're victim of our own success on that because the neighbors tell the neighbors to call in and get things controlled. And then, other things that we do for the city of Lincoln, we oversee both city landfills for noxious weeds. We don't do that for free. The city landfills pays us back for that, our department, but we've got the UTV, and I usually put one seasonal inspector responsible for that in addition to doing inspections for us. And prior to that, we're in our fourth season now, so prior to doing this, we hired contractors to do it. Well, a contractor likes to go out and do our landfills when he has time and not when it's the right time. And you can only treat noxious weeds when the timing's right to be effective. So, we've been able to make a lot of progress on the landfills. 48th Street is pretty much capped landfill, so we've got a lot of noxious weeds. Maybe that's my fault, because in my videos, I tell people, bag up your noxious weeds and send them to the city landfill, and I think we deal with them there, so. But a lot of invasive species at both landfills. Some of the other partnerships with city agencies, we've got a lot of these kiosks along the trails, so if you're out walking trails in highlands or some of the city parks, you'll see some of our information kiosk, and those folks have been great to work with on those and helping find the placement for them and building the stands, and we provide the signs, so it's a good partnership. And then, I know something that's all near and dear to our hearts is the problem resolution team. You know, right now, a lot of things are surfacing with us first, properties that are abandoned or need attention. I'm constantly on the phone with LPD or the Health Department or some of the other building and safety, some of the other agencies, as we work together to bring some of these properties into compliance. So, what does that cost you? Basically, our budget, our proposed budget for the next year would, on the city's portion is $187,728. So, in the scheme of the city budget, that seems like not a lot. And for us, it's, we run a pretty tight ship, and we take a lot of pride in running it more like a private business maybe than some government agencies where you, not in this area, but where you, where you may see money being spent unwisely. We run, our city inspectors are all in hand-me-down automobiles provided by the county, so if you see old Crown Vics or those kind of things running around, we're still driving those, but it works good for the seasonals. They don't need, we don't need new vehicles sitting there the other six months out of the year. So, basically, our proposed budget's $480,000, but then we get a lot of revenue off of doing the abatements. We recoup the cost for the abatement in addition to $100 administrative fees. So, if we do 350, 350 abatements during the year, that's $35,000 we'll bring in, just to help recoup some of our inspector cost. So, if you have questions on those, let me know. So, really, there's a lot of driving factors, like every budget personnel is our big driving factor. The contractor services is recouped money, so if it's $55,000 in my expense line, that's also that in my revenue line. Information and GIS are some of our larger expenses. When I presented this to the county board, I figured it out, and really, I have control over 8% of my budget. So, that's the paperclips and the paper and those kind of things. So, really, everything else is handed to me. About 8% is what we have direct control over. But I'll just give a little plug for these guys, too. We couldn't do what we do with, you know, 8,000 to 11,000 inspections a year without technology. And when somebody calls me to have it at my fingertips, to pull up a property and give you the history for the last decade on that property, so it is important, and they're really good at helping us continue to build, build on top of what we're already doing. And then, GIS is the mapping part of it. Each one of these dots represents an active work order. Our inspectors have this live on their tablets in their vehicles, so when they're going down the road, there are little dots moving. They can tap on that dot and bring up the work order and do that inspection right there, dropping the photos. And where that's really helpful for me and my account clerk in the office is when people pick up the phone and call us, we have live information right back into the office from what they're doing in the field. And then, some of our challenges that we face, three of our state noxious weeds right now, three of the 12 were actually sold as ornamentals at one time. So, we bring those in, we sell them to people, and they plant them in their yards, and then all of a sudden, the weed guy comes around and says, now you've got something bad in your yard, you need to take it out. But the nursery associations have been good to work with us. There's an example of purple loosestrife, I guess on the left, that's just a nice, beautiful plant in someone's yard, but then also what it does when it gets into the ecosystem, into the river systems. Some of the challenges that we face here, of course, are noxious weeds inside city limits. It's easy to control noxious, well, it's not easier, but it's easier out in the county because you don't have manicured lawns and homes right next to city trails, right next to the noxious weed patches. Some of the new technology, there's a picture of a drone there. We were able to use that up in Fallbrook last year on a lot of the fragmities there. So, that's something I think we'll see more of. I had the city parks folks up there, and they were pretty excited about it. Prior to that, I'd get an eight-wheel-drive Argo, and we'd go down in those things in the city wetlands, and you can't see over 12-foot-tall fragmities, and you're bouncing around off tree stumps that have been chewed off by beavers. So, this guy can stand up on top and fly his drone around and spray it and be a lot more efficient. So, with that, I'd ask if you have any questions or...
Are there any questions for Brent at this time? Councilman McGinnis?
Your first picture, what was that?
The what?
The first picture.
The first picture is teasel, so, and that's one that we added in Lancaster County. Do you have some of that?
No.
So, as a weed guy joke, that's, we always find it around cemeteries because people put it in their flower arrangements, and then when they want to take out their flower arrangements, what do they do but throw them over the fence? So, we find a lot of teasel around cemeteries. But it's very invasive in Missouri, Illinois, Iowa, and those places, and we added it to the noxious weed year list here in Lancaster County to try to get ahead of, ahead of the problem. But along our interstate system, especially 56th Street and 27th Street interchanges, when they built those, they brought a lot of teasel in with them.
Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you so much for coming out.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
And that concludes our budget briefings for today. We will pick up again tomorrow, Wednesday, June 16th at 1:30.